Randy, how are you?
I need replacements.
I don't mind too.
I gotta get mine done.
Randy, read my brother.
I will too. Here's.
Yeah, that's why Jill won't do it at seven o'clock.
Okay, thanks.
That's huge.
How you get the... I gotta ask someone tonight. Oh, is it? Yeah. American. Well, good.
Five hours.
Watch it, Graham.
I know, man. I set it up on my chair though. That tie too?
It does.
My dad gave it to me.
I never would've noticed that.
Sometimes seeing is believing, so.
It's magic of Christmas.
It's between this or my light-up tie. Figure I keep it, keep it a bit formal.
Last meeting.
This is the one where I'm gonna do this part, an hour, and then you go all this. You have one for each of us or what? Here's you right here. You start us.
Hey, hey! Done all right. Blessings to you. Coming out.
Are you okay, Bob? I said, "Are you okay?" He said, "Do I look okay?" I said, "Don't give me any crap." I said, "That is my duty. I'm the clerk." "My duty is to ask you guys, are you okay?" "May not be able to help you, but I can say you're okay."
You gotta catch up, John.
Joe? How are you?
Hey, Joe.
Well, I used to break up before the holidays.
Cheaper that way.
No.
Hey, Joe. Go, go. What's this hope we don't get really dumped on tonight or doesn't come at all? I don't like this four to five inches where you're up in the air.
I know. I know.
Thursday was horrible.
It was.
Okay. You want to do budget passes? You want to do budget passes?
No. You better do that early in the morning.
Do you have some more training?
You can stand for him because you're gonna have to give him out. Yeah, you're gonna have to give him out, so you can stand for him. Let me let him know.
Texas. In Texas, probably. That has been something that's always there. You might have any animals, so. It was named something else. I know. You know, they started, oh, yeah, but it's just a little comeback. No, I think it's in Dallas. I play Patano, don't I? Oh, you play at the New Stadium? New Stadium? Okay. They play that, you know, that does well. Go Gavin, you got ten seconds. He can do it. Good evening. Monday, December eleventh. Common Council meeting is now in session. Would you please stand? And our invocation is by Deacon Melvin Tardy from St. Augustine Parish. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Let us bow our heads and put ourselves in a presence of the Lord. On this December eleventh, this birthday of the state of Indiana, the date in which we joined the Union. Let us think about those things that unite us. As we prepare to gather for this South Bend Common Council, let us think about the things that we have in common as opposed to the things that may divide us. Let us remember those who still suffer the effects of violence, including a young man who is okay but was shot a little earlier today, not too far from here. That he will be okay, and all those who are touched by violence in some way. That God's mercy will be upon them. Let us remember that this is something that we all share in common, that we share our human sufferings, but we also share the promise of blessings that lie before us when we come together as one. When we come together and think about what we have in common. And let us always be mindful of those who are the voiceless, who are marginalized, who do not have the power to right the ship that needs to be righted, but that we may speak on their behalf and act on their behalf. This is what makes us great. This is what makes us a more perfect union. Let us pray all this. In God's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you will, please turn your cell phones to silent.
Silence.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Varner?
Present.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Gordy?
Present.
Councilmember Furlett?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Before our subcommittee amendments, please.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee on Minutes has inspected the minutes of the November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the council and the November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the council, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Would you do accept? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Special business, please. Ms. Fowler, would you please read fifteen seventeen?
Fifteen seventeen. A resolution awarded by the South Bend Common Council, member at, member-at-large Karen White honoring William Terrell Nix, fondly known as Billy Stick Nix, for his contribution to the arts in the, in South Bend and the Michiana area.
Thank you. Is there a presenter or presenters?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Karen White, and my residence is nineteen twelve, Melbourne Way here in South Bend, four six six one four. And the host sponsors are?
Oliver Davis, eight zero one N three, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one three.
Regina Williams Preston, eight three eight North Elmer Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six two eight. At this time, we're happy to present to the council a special proclamation in honor of the late Billy Stick Nix. At this time, we'd like to ask members of his family and others who have come with him to come to the podium.
Come on up, please.
Well, we're very honored to be able to present this special proclamation in honor of a very outstanding special person. And so I would like to share the rest of the proclamation with you, the council, and the audience at this time. Whereas Billy Stick Nix was born on December eighth, nineteen thirty-four, the second of seven children born to Wise and Alma Nix in Greenwood, Mississippi, where his parents were sharecroppers on a large cotton plantation. And whereas Billy's parents chose to move to South Bend, Indiana, where his father had relatives in the autumn of nineteen forty-four, in an attempt to escape the racial inequities of the deep south and his search of fairness and equity and a better life for his young family. And whereas Billy attended South Bend Central High School and his friend Jackie Audrey gave him his nickname Stickz because Billy had developed the habit of carrying a set of drumsticks with him at all times and drummed on whatever was within his reach at that time. It soon became obvious that he had a god-awful talent for the drums, and he purchased his first set of drums from the local pawn shop with money he earned working for a typewriter company. And whereas Billy, being self-taught and after much patience, started his first band, The Blues Notes, was still, while still in high school, and they played at weekly sock-up dance and local parties from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen fifty-five, where the band was also known as the Whooping, Popping, Bopping Show Stars. Wow! And whereas Billy graduated from high school in nineteen fifty-four, he became involved in a number, another band called They Ribbon Rockers. I love the titles. Which included another famous South Bend musician, Junior Walker on saxophone and Fred Patton on piano. And vocals, with Billy also contributing on vocals in addition to acting as the band's leader and, of course, drummer.
And whereas Billy Stickz Nix's reputation as a drummer grew, and he played with many other young, upcoming artists at various local venues, including the Morris Park Country Club, where he was approached by the mother of a young fan who admires Billy's unique skills and asks if he would consider teaching her some. This led to young Billy's first foray into lifetime career of teaching drumming. And whereas in nineteen fifty-six, Billy and Rhythm Rockers were hired to perform at a general grand opening of a teen dance party at Club Forty-Six for WNDU-TV, which became a standing gig after they signed a contract to play for the weekly Saturday afternoon dance party television show for WNDU. And whereas Billy was drafted into the U.S. Army in nineteen fifty-seven, and while taking a forced break from his own band, he played in the Army Band as a percussionist, and his tour of duty led him to Germany. When he was honorably discharged in nineteen fifty-nine, he returned to South Bend and began playing with a longtime friend, Oscar Bailey Jones, in several engagements as Oscar Bailey Jones Jazz Quartet. And whereas in nineteen sixty-two, Billy joined forces with his old friend Jackie Audrey and the Gents of Soul, and they recorded an LP in Chicago that was released on Echo Atlantic Records. Billy created this event and a tour of the southern states that followed as a turning point in his career. And whereas in nineteen sixty-three, Billy married Patty Tang, and they were married for nearly fifty-four years. Patty survives along the fortitude of the nine grad junior. And whereas Billy also played and recorded with the Motown Soul record label with his former bandmate Junior Walker and the All-Stars in nineteen sixty-two. And in nineteen sixty-six, they opened at the famed Apollo Theater in New York City. They played many other venues, including Harvard University, the Regal Theater in Chicago, the Uptown Theater in Philadelphia, Constitutional Hall in Washington, D.C., and with many famous artists, including Wilson Pickens, Sam and Dave, the Staples Singers, Louis Armstrong, Sammy Davis Jr., the Fifth Amendment's Marvin Gaye, Patti LaBelle, Gladys Knight and the Pips, the Four Tops, the Isley Brothers, Dionne Warwick, and a host of others to numerous to mention. And whereas in nineteen sixty-seven, Billy organized a performance with his own trio, the Billy Nix Jazz Trio, when he was not traveling with Junior Walker, and they played many reputable venues. Also in nineteen sixty-seven, Billy signed a contract with the University of Notre Dame and became a disc jockey of his own show, the Bill Nix Radio Hour at WNDU Studios, which was a colossal success. And... Oh, I'm sorry.
And whereas Billy continued to play in the late nineteen sixties through the mid nineteen seventies with many famous artists, including Mary Wells, jazz legend, Sonny Stitz, and blues legend, Pine Top Perkins, all while still playing in his own jazz trio and with Junior Walker and the All-Stars. And whereas Billy also branched off into promotions of other artists and in music publication, while still continuing to teach at his own private studio, Nix Music Studio, where he acted as the percussion and studio director and for affiliated groups, in addition to his teaching of percussion at the University of Notre Dame. And whereas one has only to look at the guestbook feature on Billy Nix's website to see how universally he was loved and valued as a man and musician to know what an impact he has made on thousands upon thousands of people whose lives he has touched throughout all his years prior to his passing. In a recent South Bend Tribune viewpoint article by Jeff Harrell, with whom Billy played in their Billy Stickz Nix and the Motown Machine show, he called Billy "just a beautiful spirit." This is an understatement and doesn't even begin to describe such a talented and honorable man, but it's a good start. And whereas the name Billy Stickz Nix will forever be preceded by the word legendary. And whereas Billy's life and his extensive experience in the local music culture and his many contributions to the arts through his lifelong work and love of music and as a role model for other young drummers who aspire to greatness, led to his twenty seventeen induction into the South Bend Hall of Fame. Now therefore be it publicly and proudly proclaimed as Section One. On behalf of the citizens of South Bend, Indiana, and the South Bend Common Council, we proudly and publicly recognize and thank Billy Stickz Nix for his numerous contributions to the art in our community and the entire music world. Section Two. We also look forward to Billy's legacy as being a positive role model and inspiration to all aspiring musicians, young and old, in our community. Section Three. We wish Billy Stickz Nix and his family all the blessings of God to one of the most talented spirits this world has ever known. Rest in peace, Billy. You are always in our hearts.
Thank you so much. At this time, would any of the family members like to say anything? State your name and address, please.
Patty Nix, one one four St. Lo Avenue, Michoacan, Indiana, four six five four five. My family and I would like to thank the South Bend County Council for this honor. My father, William T. Nix, would be humbled by this honor. He was a hard worker, kind, loving, patient, God-fearing man. And Bill was passionate about his music, the drums, and helping others, and especially children's education. On behalf of the Billy Stickz Nix family, we'd like to thank you and God bless you. And we truly humbly accept this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pastor Rick Jackson, pastor of Olivet AME Church, looking at seven nineteen North Milford Avenue, here in South Bend, four six six one seven. Been a joy and privilege and honor to be the pastor of such a spirit as Billy Stickz Nix. I'm reminded of something that comes out of the Bible that says, "Can any good thing come out of that?" Well, we know that many good things have come out of South Bend. South Bend, you need to be very proud of yourself for the production of such spirits who have made such an impact, not just on the community and not just on music, but on the lives of so many people. Poor love, and that love is being redistributed now from those whom he loved, and they're able to show that love to others. So I'm just privileged and honored to be able to say I was his pastor, and I was able to minister to him as he ministered to me for these three years. God bless Billy Stickz Nix and all that he gave us.
Absolutely. Thank you. This time I'm going to turn back to council for comments. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I had great pleasure of knowing Billy for a lot of years. And he was the kind of man that made people feel special every time you saw him. He was such a talent. I had the pleasure of working with him in the band also. He had more, far more energy than any of the younger people in that band. And he was always trying to get new sounds out of his drum. As accomplished as he was, he was consistently working and trying to get better and do more things and be innovative. He was such an inspiration in so many ways. And it's an honor to be here tonight to help recognize him. Thank you all.
Broden?
Yes, thank you. Equally honored to be a member sitting on this council and to be a part of this really well-deserved honor. What comes to mind for me is just pure joy and pure love. If you had the opportunity to watch him perform, and I'm certain his students probably knew the same depth of love and joy as he taught them. You know, you just, it was very difficult to walk away. It was very difficult just to watch that, you know, performance because it called the best out of you and the same. So, and I know some of you have performed with him over the years. And one thing I did have the really fortunate opportunity is just a short, a short time ago, he's actually going to the South Bend Hall of Fame honors. And I want to commend you as his daughter for doing just a beautiful job at a very difficult time to give such a strong tribute that evening. I would also like to take this opportunity as someone sitting in that audience and moved by his interview that was broadcasted on WNIT to encourage any child or any adult in this community to watch that piece and to be moved by it and inspired by it. And then the last thing I would like to say is we, just as we shared in the love and the joy and that just immense talent we also, as a community, share in your deep loss, especially as we approach this holiday time. So, thank you for sharing him with, with the community for so many years in so many ways. And what a who's who of musical talent that, you know, that he was elbow-to-elbow width and out in front of. So, congratulations. Beautiful, beautiful memories of our community and I'm sure for you as a family.
Don't you, David?
Thank you. This is one of those moments when, I can honestly say, I never met the gentleman, but having heard all this, I wish I had. And you think back, wouldn't it have been nice to have had that experience? So this must be a difficult time for you with the holidays and the loss of your mother. So I offer my sympathies and certainly my support for the resolution. It just makes things a little bit better and good.
I, I, um, I think we were all fortunate to be graced by his presence. He was such a friendly, open, genuine guy. I saw him at Teachers Credit Union just about, it seemed like, a few days, maybe a week or so before he passed. And, and I couldn't get out of there without him wanting to shake your hand and say hello and ask how you were and things. It's just the way he was. And I was thinking just now, when... Maybe when, maybe when we hear the thunder rumbling from an approaching storm, it'll really be, really. But anyway, it's a good way to remember him.
So sorry for your loss, but it's an honor to be able to recognize his legacy. And I know it's a legacy that's held on for a long time.
So, I did not, I'm a transplant, did not know Billy. But I heard about Billy, a friend of mine played trombone in a few Motown bands. And he actually told me about him. And it's like, you know where you live? Billy lives there. It's like, okay. So, I learned a lot about him. And I did not, I wish I had the opportunity to meet him. But that's the one thing that we're celebrating here, is that cultural improvement to our city and what we need to recognize. And we need to recognize the arts. And, you know, forever, everything that he taught and is passed down, that's what South Bend's about. So, thank you so much. It's an honor for us to do this. This will, in a minute, worldwide recognition of him will go down in the history of South Bend. It'll always be in the record book. And we're honored to do our small part. Vice President Davis, and you and the sponsors would like to add anything?
I would just like to say, again, it's truly an honor to have you all here tonight. When you look at the phrase of, "A person who is able to walk with queens and kings and to not lose to common touch," and that's always a blessing. When I remember him and his smile and the way he greeted you. And saw him and just, Billy just lit you up no matter what happens in your life. And to be able to have that throughout his life, that was genuine. And he was a genuine person. And just seeing you all smiling at him brings that back to... Because you know something, a person may pass away with a legacy of his own. And that's what's so powerful, that you can still hear those deep drums in your life. And we must follow those calls and never forget that. So, it's truly an honor to have all of you. Thank you again, it's an honor to be a part of this.
Anything else? With that, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of this resolution, please come to the podium.
My name is Sammy Brown, I live at 222 East Bar Street, City of South Bend. I've known Mr. Nix quite a while. And I had a post office box, not too far from his post office box. And we would always chat. And he met everybody that he met, just like he knows you in his life. And my grandson Kai did report on Mr. Nix. And Kai couldn't get the impact of who Billy was. Because Mr. Nix made him feel like just an average guy. And I kept telling Kai, I said, he's somebody special. And, you know, we're going to truly, truly miss him. Because when I went to the South Bend Grill, had some people in town one time, and I went up to him and I talked to him, and he was just like, you know that guy? I said, yeah. He says, you know, they couldn't fathom that because he was a magician, he was playing. And he treated me just like we was old friends, you know what I mean? Just to make everybody feel. May God bless and bless his family.
Thank you, sir. Next, name and address, please.
Gladys Mohammed, 808 North Ironwood. I just wanted to say that one of his studios was in the South Bend Heritage Building, Cofax. And when we get to work, we hear them drums playing all the time. But I think Bill Nix was one of the kindest human beings that ever lived. He was always kind, no matter what. He smiled at people, he shook hands, he did always ask about, how's your family? How's everybody doing? He took time to do that. Sometimes people don't always take time to do that. But he was just a kind person. And I know all his kids. And I think they're all friendly and kind. It's a blessing to be here and to hear all of this. It's great. He was a great person and lived in our midst. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing none, turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt the acquittal motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you all. Say, thank you. Ms. Fowler, will you read sixteen seventeen for this?
Sixteen seventeen. A resolution of the Common Council of South Bend publicly recognizing and commending Bernice Ball Freeman for her outstanding passion and commitment to racial and social justice in the city of South Bend.
Thank you, is there a presenter?
Yes, there are two presenters. Again, my name is Karen White. I live in nineteen twelve Melbourne Way here in South Bend, Indiana.
Oliver Davis, eight to one North Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613.
Thank you.
Again, it's a pleasure to be able to present another proclamation to our own Bernice Ball Freeman, who asks her to join the podium along with her sister, Gladys Mohammed. Whereas, as an at-large Common Council member of the city of South Bend, Indiana, I am humbled to honor and publicly recognize the many contributions and the public service that Bernice Ball Freeman has rendered to the city of South Bend and its residents. And whereas Mrs. Ball Freeman worked for the Opportunity Industrial Career Center, OIC, of America founded by Dr. Leon Sullivan in nineteen eighty-four for over fifteen years, where she helped participants gain basic educational skills and helped hundreds receive a GED. And whereas Mrs. Ball Freeman has continued to serve as a life skill coach to numerous at-risk youth and currently serves young adult women through the Porch Light Program operated by the Youth Service Bureau of St. Joseph County. And whereas, having been breast cancer-free for twenty-three years, Mrs. Ball Freeman founded the Reaching Out Breast Cancer Awareness Center, providing door-to-door educational services to raise breast cancer awareness and to promote early detection. And...
Whereas, Miss Ball Freeman has voluntarily served numerous local agencies in various capacities as a constant voice for disenfranchised members of the South Bend community, including the Minority Health Coalition, the Chronic Disease Prevention Task Force, the Michigan Cancer Survivor Society, Women in Touch, Michigan Cancer Task Force, Rages Out of Poverty, United Community Against Drug and Alcohol Abuse, St. Joseph County Drug Coalition Board, South Bend Human Rights Commission, the Women's Concern Committee, and Toys for Tots, as a key organizer for twenty years and responsible for the street renaming of Dr. Martha DeKean Jr. And whereas, Mrs. Ball Freeman has been honored with the Drum Major Award by the Martha DeKean Jr. Foundation, and more recently as City of South Bend Black History Month Honoree. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Karen White, Council Member at South Bend at Large, I'll join in that too, as a South Bend Common Council Person. Section One, it is our distinct honor to publicly commend and honor the services of Mrs. Bernice Ball Freeman for her countless contributions made to our community and her passionate commitment to racial and social justice. Section Two, on behalf of the city of South Bend, Indiana, we are most humbled to thank Mrs. Ball for her longstanding service and commitment to our city and wish her many more years of good works in relation to racial and social justice. Signed this eleventh day of December, two thousand seventeen, the city of South Bend, County of St. Joseph, the state of Indiana.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gladys Mohammed, 808 North Ironwood. I just wanted to say that my sister Bernice, everybody knows my name. Everybody knows me. But they don't always know where the power comes from. And everybody helps me. You know, you can't get anything done without somebody helping you. And my sister Bernice is always right there behind me, helping me. And she'll say, you thank the thanks for people to do and then you asked us to do it. And they do. But I remember years ago, when we grew up and we went to Washington High School, as soon as Bernice got nineteen and graduated from school, she was gone. She went to Chicago and lived in Chicago for years. And years later, she came back to South Bend and she immediately got involved with the community and helping people, helped them put their lives back together, working with low-income people and helping them. I remember when she worked for Work One, I think it was called Cedar at the time. And Bernice, when people would, you know, you build jobs and then you didn't know what happened to them anymore. And Bernice went and told me one day, I'm going to knock on these doors and find out why you didn't go to work. And then she said, you're going with me. So we had to go on the southeast side, then it was really the southeast side. And Bernice went knocking on people's doors and asking them, I want to know why you didn't go to work today. We did a lot of work helping you get a job. And you're going to tell me why you didn't keep it. And they would come out and tell her too. But my sister Bernice still does a lot of work in this community and I love her for it. And I appreciate them recognizing all those contributions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to humbly thank you for this award, but I have to tell you, a couple of days ago, somebody asked me, they said, aren't you going to retire yet? When are you going to retire? You're seventy-five years old. And I said, well, why don't you ask me? No, they said, are you tired of working? And I said, yes. And they said, well, why don't you retire? I said, why don't you ask me if I like money? And I said, and then I'll tell you, yes, and that's why I still work, because I like to spend money. Well, actually, when I came back to South Bend in nineteen eighty-three, I lived in Chicago for twenty-three years. For a whole year, I was Gladys Mohammed's sister. I had no identity. I was just Gladys Mohammed's sister. And one day finally, there was a minister and he introduced me to somebody. He said, oh, this is Gladys Mohammed's sister. I said, wait a minute, I have a name. My name is Bernice Freeman. And besides that, Gladys Mohammed is my sister, since I'm the oldest.
Thank you. I'll turn back to council right now for comments. Ms. Fowler?
Just thank you for all the great work you've done in our community. We appreciate it.
Likewise, thank you very much for your contributions.
Thanks for coming back and making this a better place.
Thank you so much. I hail, as you do, from the not-for-profit arena. And whether on the board side or on the administrative side, there's always this worker bees and queen bees, you know? Who's who, who does what? Who carries the load? Who's the thinkers? Who are the innovators? And you're the full package. When we look at this list of the organizations that you've been a part of and that you've touched, you do them both. And we are so grateful as a council and a community for your leadership. And I'm so glad that you clarified today the sister lineup. As one of seven sisters as well, I know the power of sisters. And you're doing together both things for our community. But it's so appropriate that we lift you up today and going forward with this resolution for all of your fine work. Thank you so much.
Hello Bernice, this is a night of bright lights and inspiring lights for our community. So honored to be here to recognize first Billy Sticks Nicks and now you tonight. I've seen you in action. Appreciate so much the work that you do in our community. It really is a different, a better place because of you. And can't thank you enough. Congratulations tonight.
Well, I have to say, by the time I got back to town, nobody was calling you Gladys Mohammed's sister. When I got involved, I was told I need to go see Bernice Freeman. And I think, I sat in your living room and that's when I really began to understand the connection in all of the different things that you did. So you certainly are a name in and of itself. And as I looked, I had no idea, you know? Of all of the things, I guess I could have guessed. But if someone were to ask me why you don't retire, I would say, it's because there's more work to be done. You're one of those people that will be there at all times, whenever there is a person in need. And we thank you for that. And thank you.
Ms. Freeman, thank you so much for what you've done. You're doing, and that's important. And I think that little sister has figured some of that out too. But, you know, that's what I think is the life lesson right now for a lot of millennials and others around here is to do. You know, ideas, plans are nothing without action. And thank you for your action. Appreciate it. Mr. Davis, Ms. White?
Ms., council, there's a song that talks about, "Less the works that I do speak for me." And the works truly do speak for Miss Bernice here. That they have been speaking for her for a long while, all which you heard tonight. And the reason at seventy-five, in their family, seventy-five is relatively young. When you have parents that lived to a hundred and everything else and they were cutting, her daddy was cutting grass and everything else in the late nineties and all that good stuff. So, that's one of the reasons. She's still a young babe in her family. And so that's one of the reasons why she still got all this energy. So, yeah, when she gets about ninety, then she'll probably maybe slow down at that time. But we thank her and we thank her for her ministry. And we glad for both you and your sister and all the other family members who have been a part of our community. Thank you.
It's just an honor to be able to present this resolution to Bernice. We go way back. And I just learned today that Bernice is older than Gladys. I love Gladys. And Gladys has a tendency to tell you what you need to do, how to do it, and guess what? We do it. And so Bernice, it's just been a pleasure working with you and knowing you. I've had the opportunity to work with her son when he was a student at I U South Bend. And you are tremendous. And so it's a pleasure.
Thank you. Right now, we'll turn it over to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium.
My name is Sammy Brown, I live at 222 East Bar Street, City of South Bend. I served with Bernice on the Human Rights Commission. And I really can't say that I know Bernice like I know Gladys. But I'm also on the Martha DeKean Planning Committee for Martha DeKean Howard. And I go and sit at Gladys' table and I sit next to Bernice sometimes. And it's a pleasure to know how knowledgeable she is about everything. And that's, because I never was born to kind of like walk up to her because she didn't really have that demeanor like, I want to talk to you? So I would never do that. But as I sit at the table with her, it's an honor to be around her and I listen to her talk. And I hope that she just keep on doing what she do. Because she's very knowledgeable, you know? So, this resolution is the only thing that we honor her.
Next, Kamala. Thank you, sir.
My name is Grayson Warren, I live in nineteen thirty... Excuse me, thirty-nine North... Excuse me, Johnson Street. It's South Bend, Indiana.
Okay?
Is that one? Is that one? Karen, is yours up?
This one's.
I've known Bernice all my life and all, we grew up together in the same area. My sister was a very good friend of her older sister, and her brother was friends with one of the younger ones. As long as I can remember, this family has been civically minded, and I can't think of a more deserving person to get this honor than Bernice, and I love her like a sister.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone dare to get past the little sister to speak against? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Pushing you back a second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank you so much.
Your pin?
Yeah. Okay, I need, see, you should, I take my pin, see?
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, under special business, we have a report update from Randy Shivish from the St. Joseph County Waste Management District. Sir, thank you. If you state your name and address for the record and give us your update.
Randy Shivish with offices at eight twenty-eight Kerr Street in South Bend. I'd like to keep the good feelings going, although it's not on this, on the printed version, Shivish is spelled correctly.
Yeah, right.
Excellent.
I don't know how long you had to fight with spell check, but that's.
No vowels neither.
The Soloways Management District was legislated into existence in nineteen ninety-one. Every county in the state that's required to form a district will be part of a multi-county district, with the exception of Marion County, which was exempted from the law and still is. Our district serves the local community by providing curbside recycling. A household has a hazardous waste drop-off facility, which is also commonly referred to as H H W program, and a educational program for recycling, which occur mostly in schools and various community groups. We are a governmental entity, although we are not city, county, or state, with oversight by a joint member board of directors made up of elected officials. These directors by law are the mayors of both South Bend and Mishawaka, the three county commissioners, representative of South Bend, Mishawaka, and county councils, and a city and town board member, and because we have so many small towns with elected boards in this county, the legislature decided that the circuit court judge would pick who that is, and currently that is a member of the New Carolina County Council. As a governmental entity, we follow all of the same legal requirements, state board of accounts practices, D L G F guidelines, et cetera, as cities, counties, or any other governmental body. Our board approves the resolution in favor of our budget proposal, which is then officially passed by the county council per law every year. The district employs six full-time staff, three in the office, and three in the household hazardous waste program. We also have two part-time staff, one works twenty hours a week in both the office and the H H W program, and the other only works Saturdays to help out the H H W, which tends to be our business. Our funding comes from program fees charged to residents in our curbside program, as well as tipping fees, which we receive two dollars per ton from Perryville landfill for every month to offset recycling costs. That is a common practice in the state for funding a district. The annual tipping fee revenue can fluctuate drastically from under five hundred and fifty thousand to over seven hundred thousand a year. That's only happened a couple times in twenty-seven years, so we don't count on that. We generally use five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of figuring out our revenue for our budget requests annually. Twenty seventeen was a year of major changes for the district. Starting about five years ago, we began to think about moving our H H W and office into one location. The H H W program had been on East Fifth Street in Mishawaka in our office. We'd always rented space somewhere around South Bend, most recently in the basement of Alliance Architects on the northeast. We started to talk about, could we build, could we buy something that was completely out of space in Mishawaka? For the past eight years, since I've been the director, starting at the second board meeting we ever had after I took this position, I told them, "You're going to have to raise fees around twenty sixteen if nothing changes." Then things changed, but we were able to make it through until this year. The thirteen years that I've been associated with the district, as either the county council representative on the board or the director, the discussion has occurred regarding putting our fees on the tax bill as a cost-saving measure. As it turned out, after all these years of discussion, each and every one of these major changes took place at the same time to start this year. First, the fee increase. In the past, county residents paid two dollars and seventy cents per month for a thirty-two forty annually. City of South Bend residents paid a dollar ninety-seven per month on the water bill, of which the district's portion was actually a dollar seventy-six per month. The city tacked on a processing fee of twenty-one cents per household per month. Starting in two thousand and three, I discovered, when I became the director, the district was paying more to the vendor for the curbside program than a dollar seventy-six per household per month. In other words, other revenue sources were furthering the cost of South Bend households. In twenty fifteen, our board chose to continue using down our reserve, which at the time was healthy, before addressing the fee increase. This was enough to get us through basically another year or twenty sixteen. It was determined that going forward, all residents in our curbside program pay an equal amount, which for twenty seventeen was determined to be three dollars and thirty-three cents per month per household, or forty dollars a year. That includes curbside, H H W, and administrative houses. There was also a debate regarding an H H W fee to all residential households in the county, since all residential households in the county are eligible to use the program, the H H W program. There were a lot of conversations about that. After a great deal of debate over several meetings, the decision to charge such a fee was postponed. This subject will be brought up again at our January board meeting in order for the board to consider it moving forward. That way, everyone in the county would be paying the fee. Placing the fee on the tax bill saved the district roughly eighty thousand dollars per year in printing and postage to bill all the county residents twice per year. We also had staff spending the majority of their time trying to track down non-payments, which was a very high rate when we were just billing straight. We are not the first district to collect fees in such a manner. Other districts have been doing the same for years, so we didn't create this wheel. We actually copied what others were doing. The question then came up about if someone could lose their home to tax sale if they did not pay the recycling fees. Attorney opinions from our attorney, other local attorneys, and other districts around the state was that no, the law does not allow tax sale for unpaid recycling fees or solid waste management fees. Our only recourse to collect fees owed would be some, which is what we'd always wanted to pass. I met with Mike Crook, county treasurer, and Law Associates, who handle the tax software. The result is that the recycling fees have been flagged, or actually unflagged, something in the background, there's a box for every line item on the tax bill. If that box is checked, it can trigger a tax sale. If it is not checked, it cannot trigger or be included in calculation of a tax sale. That box is not flagged, so it will never trigger. The other change that we requested and got was that our fees are now set at the loss priority for posting of funds. So if a partial payment is made towards taxes, the money is posted to items that can trigger a tax sale. We would not have anybody posted to the line item on the tax bill for solid waste management district recycling fees until all other fees are paid first. That way, there can be no backdoor way of, "We get money, but something else is short in terms of tax." Those changes have already been done in the software. To be honest with you, they were meeting after meeting after meeting, and finally I asked the question, "What, why is it Law beer?" So we got Law beer, and they did it in five minutes, so that's taken. The district purchased a building at eight twenty-eight Kerr Street in South Bend, which we closed on in February. Our office is moved in in March, and our H H W program moved and officially opened there on November sixth. I left the office to come here tonight, took six minutes to this building. Kerr Street, in case you don't know, is at San Juan Chaven, where there's Ideal Consolidated on the corner in Midwest. Kerr Street runs next to Midwest. Soon as you turn on Kerr Street, you can see our building outside. The, should be noted too, I want to note this, that the majority of work needed to get the building ready to go fully operational was performed by our staff, which saved twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars in fees to have other people running phone lines and ethernet lines. I also want to point out that that was basically my job in that, was to say, "I hold the ladder," but other people pitched in, and we got that all taken care of ourselves. It took about a month, and we did it ourselves. Also, there have been comments made that suggested that the program fees went up because we bought the building. Actually, our mortgage payments and utilities so far have run under or just about equal to what our rent payments have always been to pass, so, which we knew would be the case. This move gave us the ability to have all staff in notification, have more usable space to do things more efficiently and safely, and also keep everything inside. If you've ever been in our place in Mishawaka, in the summer when they got really busy, there were skids of items outside on the ground. That's unacceptable. We now have close to four times the amount of space indoors, so everything is now inside. We also, one of the main reasons for leaving, it's not just to be able to have more space to do things more efficiently and supervise better, but also to be more centrally located in the county population than we were previously on the far east side of Mishawaka. It was a great relationship with the city of Mishawaka. They provided assistance to us, and we certainly helped them out, but we just outruled the place. In twenty sixteen, we had approximately eleven thousand five hundred vehicles go through, which was the highest year ever. We also took in over one point one million pounds of hazardous material and electronics at our facility, which is also the highest amount ever. So far this year through November, we are on pace to match or surpass the number of people using the program, excuse me, and the amount of materials that we've taken in. The facility is now open six days a week since we might follow the city of Mishawaka's hours, and accepts various hazardous household items, flammable stains, paints, gasolines, used oil, antifreeze cleaners, acids. I'm amazed by the amount of acids we get, kind of out of people's homes. Basins, postics, pesticides, aerosols, mercury-containing fluorescent bulbs, and other devices, electronics, tires, pool chemicals, et cetera. All the things we do not anymore want to put down the drain, pour in the back door of the yard, or pour on the patio. Those items are taken by a company that we contract with, and the ones that can be recycled, cleaned up and recycled, mostly that is the used material. That's what's there with them. The rest of them are taken to an EPA through internal facility in Galveston, Texas, where they are burned off without any residue, so they're properly disposed. Curbside program serves households in unincorporated St. Joe County, the city of South Bend, and the towns of New Carolina and North Liberty. We are entering our twentieth year providing curbside recycling. Twenty-nine to thirty million pounds of recyclables are collected annually through that program. The first ten years were contracted with Waste Management to provide the service, and Borden Waste Away Group has had the contract the last nine years and next year. The current contract is set to expire at the end of twenty eighteen. Borden has stated an interest in extending the contract, and the initial offer from them was all of the same price and structure as currently contracted and an extension of another ten years. They requested this in order to invest in new trucks, make improvements in their processing facility, which would allow more materials to be accepted, such as film plastics like dry cleaning bags, shopping bags, rock salt bags, the kind of things now that there's a market for. It's not necessarily a good market, but their equipment, the line that all this runs through, cannot handle it at this time. This information was presented to the board in our November meeting, and a further discussion was had at our December meeting. Subsequently, out of the direction of the board, I had had further conversations with Borden, and they are working on some other additions to a proposed extension. I basically requested everything. We won't get everything. I do not know what all of this will be. I'll be meeting with them later this week to have further conversations, and should know more at that time. At our January board meeting, they will have some choices to make. Extend the current contract, send out an RFP, or potentially end providing curbside recycling. This option, this last option, does not appear to have much support, although it has been mentioned, and it is an option. Due to timing issues, the decision to extend the current contract or put out an RFP will have to take place in January. One of the things that I did want to note is one of the concerns that had come up is in these discussions was a ten-year extension. Ten years ago now, when an RFP was put out, four companies bid. The Waste Management only bid on the old manual little eighteen-gallon container. For some reason, they said they could do the other service if we wanted to know what they wanted to do. Borden, on a five-year proposal, was three dollars and six cents per month per household. BFI Allied was four dollars and four cents per month per household, and Reliable Republic was three dollars and twenty-nine cents per household. Borden also gave an alternative bid at that time of a ten-year for a dollar eighty-four per household. We are now up to a dollar ninety-eight after nine years. I want to point that out because of concerns a ten-year extension is an awful long time. Ten years ago, the next lowest bid was over a dollar more than what we're paying now after nine years for the equipment and the investment that any company would have to make. This is a brief update. Some of these things could take two hours to explain individually, but we are a highly used program, serving the residents throughout the county, including the city of South Bend. I'd like to offer to come to address the council at least annually in the future, in this format, committee meetings, whatever your pleasure, in order to provide an update on what we're doing and how we're doing it. The program has grown immensely. Basically, our H H W is the tail of the wagon. I can tell you that six years ago, we budgeted fifty-seven thousand dollars a year to get rid of everything that came in. The amount of stuff that's come out that we get now, at this point, and it's grown so much, we budgeted three hundred thousand, and we'll probably spend over a quarter million at least this year. That is just to remove all of the stuff that we take in. So it's used, that's great, that's what we're here for, and those are the things that we do not want getting in the waste stream, the water stream, or the pond around. I'd also like to invite you to come and see our facility. It's easy to find, we're proud of it, we actually have room, people aren't dirty and may get off of work anymore, employees smile, the public's happy, citizens in Mishawaka are not necessarily. not necessarily, but everyone else is. So if you have a chance, give us a call, we'll keep the light on, and come by and see us. That's all I have at this time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Any questions for Councilwoman?
Thank you for your presentation. Next meeting date, and if anyone wants to chase in comments with regard to this contract, to whom should they send?
Actually, call two-three-five-nine-nine-seven-one. And our meeting dates, by the way, I can get this to everyone here.
That'd be great, have it included for the record.
Pardon me?
I think that would be great, include in the record, the dates, the annual calendar that was just set, please.
Yeah, please. January, all of our meetings are on the seventh floor, county city building, Commissioner's Conference Room. They're all on Mondays, the scheduled ones, the regularly scheduled ones, and they all begin at ten a.m. January eighth, February twelfth, March twelve, April ninth, May fourteenth, August thirteenth, August twenty-seventh, October first, and December third. To be honest with you, the February, we normally meet every other month, starting in January. February and April meetings are, if business requires, I wanted to schedule it so it's on, that with everything going on, decisions need to be made. We schedule meetings earlier in the year. And in August, there's two meetings. The second one will be canceled if we have a forum for the first one and can get the budget approved in time for the county councils.
Do you have that somewhere electronically?
Pardon me?
Is that somewhere listed electronically online?
It will be as soon as, it just got approved last week, I have to send it to the media.
On the county website?
On our website, which you can get to through the committees.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get a link to our website.
That's what I was asking, so we can get the minutes.
Yeah, we'll get that linked up to our site, too.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's all.
Thank you, sir, appreciate the update.
Thank you very much.
And we will talk about having that Public Works Committee have you come more often.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving along. There is no reports from city offices, so you know, Fitzpatrick is here representing the mayor's office. Welcome.
Thank you.
He doesn't count, he's DCI.
That's right.
I'll entertain a motion, arise, committee, hold.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
In that again.
In certain ways, you count, Dr.
The committee, the whole, is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition, and with that, are limited to five minutes in their comments. Would the city clerk please read sixty-seven seventeen?
Sixty-seven seventeen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, annexing and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, and amending the zoning ordinance for property located in German Township contiguous therewith, councilman and district number one, four-two-four-six-zero-five, Cleveland Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report, please?
Joining an annexation committee met earlier with the state committee and gave us a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Good evening, Angela Smith, from the area planning commission offices located in the Lowes Village building. The petitioner is seeking to rezone the ten acres highlighted here in red in the property on the north side of Cleveland Road. As you can see from the zoning map, it's a piece of property zone A agricultural in the county, but it's completely surrounded by property zone L I light industrial in the city of South Bend. There's currently a single-family home on the property that would be demolished to make way for the industrial development as the site develops at the new zone today. There is no proposed development at this time. The petitioner is seeking to rezone this to combine it with a parcel to the east to allow for a larger industrial development site. This comes to you from the area planning commission, the favorable recommendation. Rezoning the site to L I light industrial will allow for the development of an underutilized parcel in an industrial area of the city. If you have any answering questions.
And I apologize, I'm going to entertain a motion, if, just so we can get all of this item taken care of today, and we don't have to wait until the third reading of our next meeting, which I think is in a month. Is it okay?
You have to wait for a third meeting instead.
No, we can suspend the rules. We have plenty of times before, where we move resolutions before.
It's supposed to be a third meeting, I think we have to have a third meeting. You can suspend the rules to move them around.
I think they need another meeting.
I think you have to have a third meeting, the statute requires.
They have to have another meeting, yes. They have to have another meeting.
I apologize, I thought it was just a third reading.
You can move it around so that we can hear both of you.
But, yeah, but they.
No, but we still get to hear the resolution this evening, but you can't, you need to have a third meeting.
So this will make a motion to, all right.
I apologize, so no, no motion, we'll just keep this going because we don't have to do it until the third reading, okay? So with that, is the petitioner, would the petitioner like to add anything? Please state your name and address. Sorry about the confusion.
Whole Fair with Holiday Properties, offices located at two-two-seven South Main Street here in South Bend. I'll be brief with my comments. We believe that the light industrial zoning is appropriate to the character of this area, and we do own the parcel that's adjacent to the east and the subject property, as you heard. With this twentieth year study, we have a great opportunity for industrial development in the city, and we believe it's also a great economic development opportunity for the city as well. Happy to answer any questions as you have.
Any questions for presenter or petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, back to the council, what's your pleasure?
Chair, I make a motion to send sixty-seven seventeen to the full council with third reading on one-eight.
Any recommendation?
Favorable?
Favorable, it is.
Did you say favorable? I didn't hear it.
I'm just favorable.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerks, would you please read eighty-one seventeen?
Eighty-one seventeen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the year two thousand seventeen.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the substitute version.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
I would also like to make a motion for just a purpose of public hearing to hear substitute bill eighty-one seventeen, eighty-two seventeen, eighty-three seventeen, and eighty-four seventeen together, but we would have to vote separately on all these bills.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I guess city clerk, would you please also read eighty-two seventeen, eighty-three seventeen, and eighty-four seventeen?
Eighty-two seventeen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in two thousand seventeen of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from the consolidated building fund, code enforcement, fund number six-hundred, fifteen hundred dollars from the waterworks deposit fund, number six-twenty-four, one thousand dollars from the waterworks sinking fund, number six-twenty-five, four thousand five hundred dollars from waterworks debt service OM fund, six-twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars from the sewage works OM reserve, six-forty-three, and one hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred dollars from the Century Center fund, six-seventy. Eighty-three seventeen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds, departmental and city service operations in two thousand seventeen of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the DCI grant fund, two-twelve, one hundred thousand dollars from state seized drug money, two-sixteen, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the liability insurance fund, two-twenty-six, forty-nine thousand dollars from Kowalewski Stadium Fund, four-oh-one, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from the vehicle equipment leasing fund, seven-fifty, twenty-two million five hundred thousand dollars from the Eddy Street Commons Capital Fund, number seven-fifty-nine, and two million five hundred thousand dollars from the Eddy Street Commons Debt Service Fund, seven-sixty. Eighty-four seventeen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapters, chapter two, article fourteen, section two dash seventeen of the South Bend Municipal Code to establish various funds, Moore's Performing Arts Center Self-Promoted Events Fund, two-seventy-four, parental leave fund, seven-fourteen, and the two thousand seventeen Parks Bond Fund, number four-seventy-one.
Is there a committee report for all four?
Yes, the Personnel Finance Committee, Health, Aid Committee meeting, public hearings on all four bills, and we sent all four to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
I need the council, and Hocken Hall City Controller offices on the twelfth floor of this building. Before you, you have a second substitute bill of the budget transfers. These are transfers within one fund, so they're not asking for any additional money. We're just moving funds between different categories within the budgets that were appropriated in two thousand seventeen. A few to talk about, and this is a substitute only from the original due to one division number wasn't quite right on, of course, when we highlighted it on here. So some of the items that are on here are, in two thousand seventeen, started fully charging all departments for water, so our Parks Department was underbudgeted for that because we didn't really know what to expect. Splash pads are very expensive, but very important, so that was one of the items that we did this year. We had, in the past, we budgeted our personnel, and if people took health insurance, we budgeted for health insurance, and often if they didn't, we didn't budget for health insurance. There's one on here for human rights, where the person originally in that position didn't take health insurance, so it wasn't budgeted, so we're just transferring some money to cover health insurance. Going forward, I think the practice is now just budget health insurance for the most part. There's one for IT and innovation, where originally when we budgeted, we budgeted in different divisions for innovation versus IT. We decided to roll them all up into one, it just makes more sense, so we're just moving money between the two different divisions that were originally set up. And then our telephone costs were higher this year than anticipated, and when we were reviewing these during the budget season, we found that there were some circuits that had gone up in price and that we really didn't need anymore, so we went ahead and eliminated those circuits. So while we weren't able to save as much in two thousand seventeen as we would have liked, we will be saving roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in two thousand eighteen on those, from shutting down those circuits. And we did talk briefly about that during the budget season, but there were.
He just stepped out.
Okay. I want to say that there were, you know, I can't remember the number of circuits, but there were a number of circuits that were shut down based on working together and doing the IT allocation and really digging into all the numbers that we were charging for. So that was one of the bonuses of really digging into the allocations that we have this year. And the last one I was going to point out is, in our Edit Fund four-oh-eight, we had some debt service payments that were for December of two thousand sixteen that were paid at the beginning of December, or of January of two thousand seventeen, so we're just trying to write high that budget to cover them. So those were the needs items. Does anyone have any questions on the transfers?
Any questions from council? Chris, I should, of course. With regards to the savings, the circuits that we shut down, to whom do we make the payment for those circuits?
I believe it's AT&amp;T.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none at this time, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of any of these four bills? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, public portion is closed, back to the council, what's your pleasure?
Do we have to vote on these all separately?
Yes, please.
Yeah, motion separate.
Motion to bring to the floor, council, eighty-two seventeen, favorably.
Substitute.
It's a second. It's a second substitute.
Substitute.
So a motion for a second substitute, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Eighty-two seventeen?
Motion to bring eighty-two seventeen, favorably.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Motion to bring eighty-three seventeen, favorably.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And motion to bring eighty-four seventeen, favorably.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Entertain a motion, arise and resolve from the committee, the whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Pete's a one.
Full council's now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading to eighty-one seventeen?
Eighty-one seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for year two thousand seventeen.
Entertain a motion to amend the rules in the committee, the whole.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion for passage?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Eighty-two seventeen.
Eighty-two seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in two thousand seventeen of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars from consolidated building fund, code enforcement, number six-hundred, one thousand five hundred from the waterworks deposit fund, number six-twenty-four, one thousand dollars from the waterworks sinking fund, number six-twenty-five, four thousand five hundred from the waterworks debt service OM fund, six-twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollars from the sewage works OM reserve, six-forty-three, and one hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred dollars from the Century Center Fund, number six-seventy.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, eighty-three seventeen, please.
Eighty-three seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in two thousand seventeen of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the DCI grant fund, number two-twelve, one hundred thousand dollars from state seized drug money, number two-sixteen, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the liability insurance fund, number two-twenty-six, forty-nine thousand from the Kowalewski Stadium Fund, number four-oh-one, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from the vehicle equipment leasing fund, number seven-fifty, twenty-two million five hundred thousand dollars from the Eddy Street Commons Capital Fund, number seven-fifty-nine, and two hundred and, two hundred, two thousand, yeah, two, two, two million five hundred thousand dollars from the Eddy Street Commons Debt Service Fund, number six-seventy.
Motion for passage?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, eighty-four seventeen.
Eighty-four seventeen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, articles fourteen, section two dash one-seventy for the South Bend Municipal Code to establish various new funds for the Moore's Performing Arts Center Self-Promoted Events Fund, number two-seventy-four, parental leave fund, number seven-fourteen, and the two thousand seventeen Parks Bond Fund, number four-seventy-one.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?[1676.62]
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Move the resolutions now. We'll go reading to 1774, please.
1774. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeals for property located at 926 Erskine Plaza, South Bend, Indiana, 46614.
Sir, committee report.
The zoning annexation committee met earlier today and gave us a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Present.
Hi, Oka Payk, zoning and business services administrator with the Building Department at 125 Lockyett, Suite 100. The special exception petition for a tattoo establishment in a CB commercial business district comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals. The petitioner plans to do microblading as part of a beauty salon business already open at this location. Microblading is considered tattooing by the state, requiring the applicant to go through special exception process before he can get a health department approval. No one spoke in remonstrance at the ABZA meeting. If you have any questions for me, I can answer them. The petitioner is also here, he can clarify what they use actually as...
Thank you. The petitioner, if you come up and give a brief, very brief statement, then we'll take questions.
My name is Longtree. I'm kind of at 644 East 16th Street in Mid-Clark, Indiana. Microblading services is considered a semi-permit tattooing service that draws in fine hair-like cuts into the eyebrow that last anywhere between nine and eighteen months.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Sounds painful.
Wasn't any man pointing that out, committee? Thank you. Is anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Please come forward. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against? Please come forward. Thank you. Return back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Davis?
Thankfully, we're out.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Good luck. 1776, please.
1776. A resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as Jefferson Boulevard and Main Street, South Bend, Indiana, 466, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year real personal property tax abatement for a River Park Leasing Corporation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter? Doctor Mueller, now you matter to us.
Good evening, council. James Mueller, Executive Director of Community Investment. I'm glad I've been invited and able to speak. This is the, uh, confirming resolution of the tax abatement for the new office space right across from the County City Building. They're on Jefferson and Main. It's a $9 million of private investment, approximately $38,000 square feet of space, and it's the first such development in the downtown area in a couple decades. And we had a lengthy discussion last night, so I'll see if you have any...
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this confirming, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against? 1776, please come to the podium. Back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. 1778, please.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, adopting a written physical plan and establishing a policy for the provisions of services to an annexation area in German Township, Banye Annexation Area.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Good evening. Michael DeVita, planning Department of Community Investment, offices on the 14th floor of this building. So this fiscal plan is for a 9.65 acre annexation requested by the property owner of 24605 Cleveland Road, which is on Cleveland Road or Nims Parkway just west of the bypass. As you heard earlier in the meeting, the site's supposed to be redeveloped for light industrial uses. No capital improvements are planned by the city as part of this annexation. Water and sewer are both available along Cleveland and Eagle Way at the south and north edges of the area. The adjacent portion of Cleveland Road is already within the city limits. The annexation area will be added to the common council's first district and be served by Police Beat 22, Fire Station 11 located on Bennix Drive, Emergency Medic 11, and Co. Enforcement Area 8. These and other non-capital services will be in place within one yearly effective date of the annexation, which responds to times comparable to other areas of the city. And in answer to the council's adoption of the fiscal plan, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none. Is there a petitioner? You're it, right? Okay. No, no, no. He covered it. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1778? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1778? Please come to the podium. Back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 1779, please.
1779. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of South Bend, Indiana and the St. Joseph County for a provision of the Anilam Service in St. Joseph County.
Thank you. Is there a presenter? Oh, wait, committee report.
Health and Public Safety Met and sends to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Now, is there a presenter?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Steve Cox, and the fire chief with the South Bend Fire Department, offices at 1220 South Michigan Street. We're respectfully requesting the council approve this resolution, which would, uh, basically allow the South Bend Fire Department to provide service for the unincorporated portions of the county, the paramedic ambulance service for the next two years. Additionally, beyond the two years, the contract is set to renew annually, assuming neither party is wanted to terminate the contract, as we talked about committee. I'm here to answer any questions anybody has.
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1779? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1779? Please come to the podium. Back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. 1780, please.
1780. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to appoint the Board of Public Works and the Department of Public Works as its agent for overseeing the Guarantee Energy Savings Contract for venues, parks, and arts.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
There is. President Scott?
The Parks, Arts, Recreation Committee met earlier today and sends this substitute resolution, 1780, to the full council.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Good evening. My name is Terrence DeRoe. I'm the Director of the Sustainability Office of the City of South Bend, with offices located on the 17th floor of this building. Guarantee Energy Savings Contracts is a special type of public works project, and therefore governed under state statute. They account for both the design of an energy savings project as well as the construction of an energy savings project. The first step of that is a energy audit of all facilities that would be considered for treatment under the project, and so that will include all venues of our campus facilities as well as outdoor facilities such as trails and ball carts. It's a great opportunity to save energy, but it does require a lot of collaboration between the council and a very qualified partner, which we are well on our way to. So with your, uh, eye vote on this resolution, we'll be able to move forward with the design of this project, and we will come back to the council with a project recommendation after several months of engineering.
Great. Any questions from council?
How many people are involved in the qualified, as qualified partners? Like, is that within the State of Indiana, or can we go outside the State of Indiana? What's sort of...
Uh, so we, when we wrote our request for qualifications, we thought it was important that the provider be listed by the Department of Local Government Finance as a, registered as a eligible for public works project, both the design and the construction, because this is a design-built type of project. So we limited, um, our potential applicants to that pool, but it included, in my technical opinion, the best available contractors that work nationally. So many of these very qualified national firms have Indiana-based or Midwest-based teams that would work directly with us.
Any other questions? Nope? Thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1780? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1780? Please come to the podium. Again, back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Point of order.
This was to be amended?
As it was during the committee.
Let's draw my second. All right. We draw the motion. Make a motion to adopt as, make a motion to adopt the amended version.
Second, as it was heard in committee. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sorry about that.
Make a motion to adopt the amended version.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Fowler? Sorry. Start over.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorty?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
And President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Sorry about that. There were some script errors that were cleaned up. Um, bills, first reading, Ms. Fowler. 8517, please.
8517. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission of St. Joseph County amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 9, Administrative Updates Procedures for Zoning Map Amendment, Variances, Special Exception Uses, and Written Commitments Associated with the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, Applications, Article Number 11, Definitions to Further Define the Zoning Administrator as the Executive Director of the Area Plan Commission, and Article 12, Flood Plane Regulations to Designate the Building Commissioner as the Flood Plane Administrator.
I move this bill be sent to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on 12/19 and referred to the Zoning and Annexation Committee for second reading and public hearing on January 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 8617, please.
8617. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission of St. Joseph County amending Chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 10, Enforcement by Adding the Area Plan Commission to the Designated Enforcement Staff.
I move this also be sent to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on 12/19 and also referred to the Zoning and Annexation Committee of the council for our second reading and public hearing on January 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 8717, please.
8717. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter 1 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 13, Historic Preservation Commission in Connection with the Transition of Historic Preservation Staff to the City of South Bend under the Interlocal Agreement between the City of South Bend and St. Joseph County.
I move this be sent to the Community Investment Committee for second reading and public hearing on January 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 8917, please.
8917. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter 1 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 13, Historic Preservation Commission in Connection with the Transition of Historic Preservation Staff to the City of South Bend under the Interlocal Agreement between the City of South Bend and St. Joseph County.
I move this be sent to the Community Investment Committee for second reading and public hearing on January 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 8717, please.
8717. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana amending Chapter 1 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 13, Historic Preservation Commission in Connection with the Transition of Historic Preservation Staff to the City of South Bend under the Interlocal Agreement between the City of South Bend and St. Joseph County. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission of St. Joseph County, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article nine, administrative updates procedures for zoning map amendment, variances, special exception uses, and written commitments associated with the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, applications, Article number eleven, definitions to further define the zoning administrator as the executive director of the Area Plan Commission, and Article twelve, floodplain regulations to designate the building commissioner as the floodplain administrator.
I move this bill be sent to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on twelve nineteen and referred to the zoning and annexation committee for second reading and public hearing on, uh, January eighth.
Second.
All in favor. All opposed. Thank you. Eighty-six seventeen, please.
Eighty-six seventeen. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Area Plan Commission of St. Joseph County, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article ten, enforcement by adding the Area Plan Commission, Commission to the designated enforcement staff.
I move this also be sent to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on twelve nineteen and also referred to the zoning and annexation committee of the council for our second, uh, reading and public hearing on January eighth.
Second.
All in favor. All opposed. Thank you. Eighty-seven seventeen, please.
Eighty-seven seventeen. First reading on an ordinance initiated by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article thirteen, historic preservation commission in connection with the transition of historic preservation staff to the city of South Bend under the interlocal agreement between the city of South Bend and St. Joseph County.
I move this be sent to the Community Investment Committee for second reading and public hearing on January eighth.
Second? All in favor. All opposed. Thank you. Eighty-eight seventeen is a script errors error, that is correct, it is a repeat of eighty-six seventeen, so, uh...
You made the vote to...
Strike it.
I'll make the motion to strike?
Second.
All in favor. All opposed. Thank you. Eighty-nine seventeen, please.
Eighty-nine seventeen. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article three, commercial slash mixed-use district to revise permitted uses and development standards.
Uh, move this be sent to the zoning and annexation committee for second reading and public hearing on January eighth.
Second.
All in favor. All opposed. Thank you. Unfinished business, please. Seventeen seventy-five.
Seventeen seventy-five. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend approving a petition of the Area Board of Zoning Appeal for property located at eight oh six Howard Street, Portage Township, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven.
I move this be referred to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on twelve nineteen and then referred to the, uh, or assigned to the zoning and annexation committee for second reading and public hearing on January eighth.
Second.
We just did that. Yeah, for this one. Seventeen seventy-five, yeah.
Just check the, what the rest of the motion was.
Hold on a minute, eighty-nine seventeen. I just had area plan, does it go to, uh, I mean, I have zoning and annexation.
It goes to area plan.
I thought she just wrote seventeen seventy-five.
Well, it's finished seventeen seventy-five, but I'm saying...
Yeah, 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 hold on a minute. Alright. So, is there a motion for seventeen seventy-five? Yeah, you just made it.
Yeah, there's a second.
Okay, all in favor. All opposed. Thank you, let's go back to eight, eighty-nine seventeen, please. Um, all I have was area plan, I mean zoning and annexation.
That's all we talked about in committee, yeah.
Right.
Is it going to be a joint?
No, it should go area plan before it comes to the zoning committee.
For their meeting on twelve nineteen.
Yeah.
Then can we have a new motion for eighty-nine seventeen?
Motion to, um, send eighty-nine seventeen to area plan on this, what's that, twelve nineteen? And then to Z and A, and a meeting on, on January the eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed. Okay, thank you. Move on to new business. Uh, Vice President Davis?
Um, good evening, sorry I was not able to be there this afternoon. Um, I will be sending out, uh, a meeting notice, um, for the regarding our homeless situation and, um, our homeless bill of rights. Um, we will send out a notice and, um, send out, um, I know Joe, the councilwoman, and Broden has sent me a notice, I am still catching up on a lot of things, and so, I'll send it out so we can, um, send out an agenda for next week, uh, for our meeting, for next Wednesday, the twentieth. I would like to just share that this is...
Twelve twenty is meeting?
That's correct. And this is just a, we'll get an update from our attorney, and then that way, it gives us the direction of which way to start, uh, channeling, wherever you're gonna go. I also will be sending out some other documents that I have too, that I'd like you all to take a look at, that I have been working on my own research, and so, they coincide with this, so you can look at, um, all of these different ideas together. So, we will put that together and, you have a statement?
Yeah, I just want to let you know that I hope to have the options in a memo to you by Wednesday, Thursday, the very latest. With consideration for the meeting on twentieth.
Okay. So, basically, what I do, uh, once I get your, um, um, uh... Memo? Then I'll send out, send out a note to you.
So, um, and you'll let me know, like, who the presenters are? Are there several people? Or you just have them by, that's it?
We just have them by.
Okay.
I mean, we, we're not rushing all this stuff.
Oh, I wasn't sure.
I know. But now, we, I mean, I shared everything, all the presenters, and we organized how we done doing that, and look, that all has not been put together yet. I mean, we go, we just, we at the beginning stages. We're seeing some direction from him, and then after that, we'll start, um, um, putting everything together, so, I don't have any by, uh, coming to present. I mean, we, this is Christmas, y'all. People don't really, we, we're just getting a position, and then we have all the presenters starting in January.
I agree.
Okay.
Trust me, I'm not asking for meetings.
If I could comment, I think, uh, with regard to the timing on this, it would be very important that we chase as many of these documents to, uh, the clerk's drop box that has been established, as well as, um, uh, laser fish, or whatever's our, what's the other?
Clerk's office.
Yes, uh, chase it to the clerk's office, um, and that those become, uh, as easily publicly available as possible, so then, because one of the things I've heard was, you know, people want input on this issue, so, um, if we can, uh, utilize our time by getting the things that we'll be considering in advance, um, I think that's terrific. So let's just settle the, the information going into the meeting, and then, um, I understand, Oliver, that this can be preliminary, um, but let's try to get as much as we can into the public, and in advance.
That is why, I agree with you, that's why this, you know, totally different approach. Typically, um, we have, uh, ordinance almost put together in our, um, recommendation by the time we come up and do all that kind of thing in public and everything else, and so, you all are given a chance, because of the nature of everything going on, is to see how, um, everything's lining up, and so, I mean, we still getting things, some spare ones, but, for the issue of transparency, and then, just wanted to have, uh, a lunch scheduled with, with Mrs. Hannah, um, Pittsburgh, if you can stay there. So, we, we gotta get on page there, so we can all, nobody run ahead of each other, we, except the mayor's call unity.
Well, we're welcome.
It's Christmas.
Dr. Horner.
As long as Ms. Pittsburgh is here, for the mayor's office. I'm not sure what the collection schedule was on the, on the... A lot of things on the south side didn't get breached on the second pass, or the third pass, whichever it was. So, uh, as soon as we get break in the weather, um, we're still putting the crews out, it would be good to come back to the south side, because we got a lot of leaves that I know are gonna end up in the street if they don't get picked up. Thank you, ma'am.
Can I add to that? Can we just look at possibly one more round? Because I know when, um, I've gotten a lot of emails, a lot of times, they came up to the southwest side, they came in November, but as we all realize, the way the weather was this year, um, majority of the leaves were not down, and so, we just got, the best thing that happened, we had a lot of wind blew, a few days ago, and so, you know, but that's still, after this and after the snow, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, I'll certainly speak over our bill, just depend on what the others say.
I understand. Good piece.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes, I believe on Monday, December the eighteenth, the school board is scheduled to take action on their focused two thousand eighteen proposal. The meeting will be held, uh, at their, uh, I think the, the fourth floor conference room, third board, and it starts at five thirty. So we're encouraging, uh, all council members and others to please attend, and, um, I don't know if they're gonna be asking for public input, but it's opportunity for us to, to really weigh in. Uh, the school board has had a number of meetings throughout the community, and again, it's important that we, as council, that we're aware of what's happening in terms of our educational system.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for new business?
Um, last words I have is, uh, I'd just like to thank everybody, it's gonna be a good year with y'all, our last meeting of the year, so, um... Oh, well, go ahead and say it, I'll, I'll back off. Go ahead and say it.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for a good year, this is our last meeting, we will send out another announcement that we will not be meeting on December twenty-fifth, I don't know why.
I'm Bob.
One thing that I did put together that is on the council Facebook page is just kind of some recap of, um, some of the data that, in the facts of what this council's done. We've heard a hundred and sixty-one, uh, bills and resolutions, uh, eighty-six bills and seventy-five resolutions, uh, sixteen tax abatements, twelve special exceptions and rezonings, so, I know we're gonna be looking at tax abatements, rezonings, special exceptions, so, um, that's pretty good. Um, council attendance was excellent for all these meetings, we hit ninety-three percent, uh, attendance. Um, you know, life happens, sometimes we miss things, I've had family issues to deal with. Regina Williams-Preston and Mr. Oliver Davis both, uh, made every single council meeting, so thank you so much, Jeff. Um, that was a total of twenty-three meetings, including the one tonight, uh, committee meetings, uh, our attendance was eighty-one percent. For those, uh, that was a hundred and thirty-two committee meetings. Um, not everybody has to attend committee meetings, so, um, that's really not a strike against you, it's good to show what's going on, because if you're not on a committee, you're not, uh, and, you know, you don't have to attend, you're not required to attend. So, uh, the good thing is, uh, most of the time you are here listening, even if we're not on a committee, so, uh, I want to thank everybody for, um, their hard work on this council, uh, it's been a good year, and a productive year, and, um, cooperation. Tricia Slomai asked me one time, um, you know, we don't hear about this council in meetings, and, uh, I'm like, bore you guys to death, that's the way I like to do things. Um, and we've been productive, so. So, uh, new business. Anything else we have is, uh, privilege on the floor. Um, and this is the point where everybody can get up and speak, you have three minutes, you cannot speak on anything that was on the agenda tonight or spoken about, uh, this is the time for citizens to address the council, we do not answer immediately, we will, um, give you, uh, guys feedback or assign it to committee, or, uh, ask the city to get involved if it's something pertinent that the city needs to get involved. You have three minutes, uh, apiece, give your name and address.
I got it.
Nope. Gavin Furlong's got it. Um, you got three minutes, Gavin Furlong will tell you, and he'll give you a thirty-second warning, uh, so you can come to the podium. I know Mr. Brown is a veteran and knows how to do this.
Simon Brown, two-two-twos, Forest Street, City of South Bend, and I want to echo Ms. White, what she just said to the council about the school board, the best ground game, I've been missing a couple council meetings, maybe three, I don't know, which is not normal for me to do.
I know.
It ain't that I don't care about the city, because they do. Uh, but the school, our school system is very important, what we're going through right now, we're going through a lot, and, uh, I, I go to the school board meeting, and I even foresee this coming, what we're going through, and I, I hope we just, uh, get through it without a lot of pain. With saying that, uh, I hope you, as the council, would echo what you quite said, come, support your, your kids, and put your input, uh, to the boards that govern our school system. Another thing I would like to say before I leave is, uh, in the inner city, we still burying people, and we having a lot of gunfire out there, so we'd like for you to council to, uh, ask Mr. Scott if you send, uh, Mr. Mikowski a letter, and ask him that he forgot about the inner city, because overnight, uh, down on, uh, Virgil and Union, sounding big, bro, you know, my buddy called me, he was just like, he was just like the wild west, and it's all over the inner city. So, I know that he's got a lot to cover, but we in the inner city are dying in bullets. So, I wish you guys would support Mr. Scott, send a letter to Mr. Mikowski, and for him to address Mr. Scott back, that he forgot about the inner city, and that he's working on it, let us have some hope, bro. That's what I would like to hear, because I don't think, uh, just a name and person like myself will have no effect to contacting, so maybe somebody like Mr. Scott and his council, you contact him, I think might get the result. Thanks for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anyone else? Name and address, sir.
Thanks, hi, my name is Jamie Hague, I live at nine twenty-five North Notre Dame Avenue, South Bend, so I'm on a preview tonight, an issue of great importance to the families in my neighborhood, which is on the agenda for next month's meeting, so petition for variances and special exceptions.
Sir, hold on a minute. It's regarding...
Am I out?
It's regarding the unfinished business that was on the agenda.
Oh, I can't speak to it?
Yep, it's on the agenda, you can't do that.
If you'd like to speak generally about just general zoning issues...
General zoning issues. Can I speak to general zoning issues?
Also, if you want, you can submit your, your, uh, speech, or what you're gonna say to the clerk's office, and they can pass that out to council, but, uh, you cannot speak of anything on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Can I, can I say just a, a minute about general zoning?
Very general.
Very general. Very general zoning, when, when, when property owners invest in a neighborhood, and they rely on the zoning rules that are in place, when someone seeks a variance or an exception to that, generally, to advantage their property, it's very generally, the disadvantage of the other property owners, the other property owners might think that's unfair and perhaps not consistent with, um, with the zoning rules, and so, um, you may be hearing in general sense from certain of those owners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Do you want to leave your information with clerk's office?
So if you can generally look over it.
Seeing no one else?
Much to adjourn, sir.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Fifty, and loving stuff. See ya, eighty-seven, in the book. I think you end up with me, you know, you know that stuff.
She's gotta work, she's working.
Bye. So, we're really working. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I'll be in the house. At least for that.
I don't know. He's serving the war as a tool. I accept things that are needed. Thank you all.
So he's been doing some more.
You can just, and you can even decide.
What does it do with this?
No rush, make as simple as possible, and I don't even need to decide. Thank you.
Hopefully I know about some more sponsors.
Oh, uh, I know something. They came and talked a lot, so they know, it was never on the agenda, it was continued.
And you go bring the boss?
One, one time they did come, it was all taken down, because we continued.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, 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 I'll,